My name is Bill Indike. I am. I am the Urban Affairs columnist for MinPost. It's a Minnesota online newspaper and I will be the moderator for tonight's West St. Paul Ward Three Candidate Forum. This forum is sponsored by WOW, Women of West St. Paul, ROCC, the Residents of Color Collective, and the West St. Paul Greenway Coalition. The purpose of these forums is to provide a platform for West St. Paul citizens to ask questions to candidates running for office in West St. Paul for the purpose of having an informed electorate. The sponsors feel this is vitally important every election year. The West St. Paul Candidate Forums are our first of many efforts to make city government more accessible to West St. Paul residents. It's often hard to find information on local candidates and even the most beautiful campaign literature cannot tell us the whole story. This forum will offer an opportunity to learn more about the candidates, their policies, and their opinions about local issues. I'm going to give a brief overview of the forum's structure for the benefit of both candidates and the audience. And I'll add that currently we have one candidate here, Lisa Engsarn. The other candidate, Dave Meisinger, was invited but isn't here and we didn't hear from him, so if he shows up, then we will include him at that point. I want to remind you all that we're here to listen to what the candidates have to say. Everyone on the Zoom call except myself and the candidates have been placed on you. If you have a question, you may post it in the chat. Both the Zoom chat and Facebook chat will be monitored throughout the forum. There will be 15 minutes toward the end of the forum where candidates will be asked questions from the chats, so please use that. We would like to thank Tori Elsmore for lending her expertise in making this Zoom platform work. Candidates, we ask that you respect one another. Do not cross-talk or interrupt while another person is talking. Tonight, you will be asked several questions which represent the variety of topics that are of interest to the citizens of our city. All questions were submitted by the residents of West St. Paul. The format of the forum, screening questions and guidelines, has been guided by the League of Women Voters Recommendations. I will read the questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. You are not required to use all of the time. After both or one candidate have responded, there will be an opportunity to offer a one-minute rebuttal. So that might not be necessary today, like I said earlier. Tori Elsmore is our timekeeper. She will hold up signs when you have 1 minute and 30 seconds left. I think she's going to be using the clapping icon for Zoom here as a way to do that. When you have reached the end of your two minutes, she'll hold up the stop sign. So you are asked to finish your sentence at that time. We can move on to the next candidate or question. And that's in case that becomes necessary. With each question, we will rotate the person who responds first. If the candidate continues to talk, I will have the option of muting you. So keep that in mind. Candidates will also be given two minutes to make an opening statement and three minutes to make a closing statement if we don't run out of time, which I don't think we will. So candidates for the Ward Three race, enough medical order, are Lisa Engsarn and Dave Meisinger. All the candidates have sent the same materials and invitations for tonight's forum. We appreciate your willingness to participate. So thank you for coming, everyone who's here in attendance today in virtual COVID ways. Thank you for caring about your local government and wanting to learn more about the candidates. So let's begin with the opening statements. Ms. Engsarn, I turn it over to you for your two-minute opening remarks.
Let's see, can you hear me? Looks like you should be able to. Thanks, Bill. My name is Lisa Engsarn. I'm running for West St. Paul City Council, Ward Three, as you all know. So again, thanks, Bill, for moderating. It's a rock, wow, and West St. Paul Greenway for putting this together. The reason I'm running is because I've seen the need for compassionate leadership. We need people making policy decisions for this community who are willing to go to the extra mile to meet constituents where they are, to be clear and transparent in their actions, and who have the ability to work together despite differences. I've done that for two years now as your Ward Three rep, and I would love to do it for another four years. Some of the most important issues of this campaign are maintaining and improving the key functions of your city services. We have one of the best public works teams in the business and will continue to find efficiencies and partnerships to provide the best snow plowing, park maintenance, emergency services, including police and fire, and road maintenance and improvement while ensuring we stay on budget and keep living in West St. Paul affordable. It's important to have creative goals and dreams for the city, but also to make decisions that keep us on track to be in the healthiest financial position. The events of the last five months have demonstrated who is equipped to confront topics such as structural racism, inequality, and public health. And my degree in peace studies and communication from the College of St. Benedict, St. John's University has prepared me for some of the most difficult conversations our cities have had to address in many years. I come to these discussions with an open mind and also with the ability to push us beyond our comfort level while also being respectful. We must continue to make improvements in the way we engage our community members that will foster greater inclusion of all citizens, participation in the process of local government, and consensus building. I'll do this by being an active and engaged council member to everyone in Ward Three, like I have these last two years. Engagement is about being available to your constituents, being willing and ready to go to them, and creating meaningful relationships that make important interaction a natural part of our roles. I have the ability to do this best. I've gone above and beyond the opportunities the city provides and have planned successful community events in our parks. I look forward to building on these activities that are fun but also play a role in strengthening our connection. What I would like voters to know about me is that I have the experience and the energy to fight for West St. Paul at all levels, and I come prepared for every meeting and event. My professional career has allowed me to build the relationships and the skills to advocate for us. My six years of experience working at the state senate mean that not only can I work with state legislators representing us, but I can navigate the difficult decision-making process that is often hidden or misunderstood by the public. I'm working hard to build these relationships to ensure that West St. Paul is not left out of critical funding and policy decisions. And project management, local government, and conflict resolution and communications experience make me the candidate who can help bridge division and find fast results for you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Engsarn. And I don't know if you saw the thumbs up that Victoria was putting up for timekeeping purposes or not.
Did I run out of time?
No, just to make sure that you're aware that those exist. But yeah, great. Well, the first question, you might have already covered it. It's tell us why you are running for city council. So if you'd like to tackle that one, that's the first question.
Yeah, I think I covered it pretty well just then, but I'll also add that I don't want the city to move backwards. I do want us to keep innovating, giving power to our volunteers and volunteer committees, and I'm the approachable candidate, and this is a tight-knit community. So it's important that someone with a big heart and a sharp sense of the direction we need has the opportunity to serve this community. So I see West St. Paul rising in every way right now, and I'd like to help keep moving us along the way.
Great, thank you. Okay, the second question for tonight is what specifically have you done in your prior time on council? And what will you commit to doing if elected? To personally reach out and build relationships and involve renters, Black Indigenous, people of color, LGBTQ communities, and other underrepresented groups in your ward and in West St. Paul overall? And then also, how would you go about doing that?
Sure, let's see where I like to start. I always try to support and amplify the voices of our diverse communities. And so that would mean when Rock or Pride in the Park or anything like that is having an event, I'm always sure to share those and attend, which I think is really important. Any council members who don't attend those events are missing out on really important information and important listening opportunities to listen to people and meet them where they are and hopefully make plans that better serve them. So shortly after George Floyd was murdered by Minneapolis Police, I planned an event called Skate Against Hate at Harmon Park. We raised thousands of dollars for Mother's Love in Minneapolis, and Rock came out and helped support it us and collected a ton of food for Neighbors, Neighbors, Inc. Also, in 2019, I helped drive the passage of our Pride proclamation. Anyone who is in that open council work session knows how hard I advocated for it. And then along with Councilmember Wendy Berry and a handful of really incredible volunteers, we planned the first West St. Paul Pride in the Park, which was just incredible. We weren't able to do it again this year due to COVID, but I suspect next summer we will be doing it again. And let's see, these are some examples of what I've done, but I can assure you I'll continue to show up and speak up for diverse communities in West St. Paul.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, COVID has definitely changed some of those ways that we connect with each other. Okay, your third question is what will you do as a city council member to ensure communities of color do not have a reason to fear the police in West St. Paul?
No, I had the chance to listen to yesterday's answer, and so I've had a little bit more time to think about this. And it's one thing for me to say what I think we should do, but I know we need to keep listening. I know we don't have necessarily the answer yet. And so I need to keep listening and I need to keep seeking out those answers, but also I have really opened conversations with our police chief. Again, with the past events, the past few months, there's been a few times where I called him just saying things like, what are you going to make sure? What are you going to do to make sure this doesn't happen in West St. Paul? And having those really difficult conversations, well, again, like I say, also being respectful. You know, I believe that Black Lives Matter, and I also believe that we need the police here in West St. Paul. So just doing all we can to bridge the groups and also supporting programs like 360 Communities, and we have additional mental health services here in West St. Paul, mental health specialists in the police department to reach people in a way that's less intimidating than your average police approach.
Great. The next question is about housing. There's a big housing shortage and affordability problem here in the Twin Cities and in West St. Paul. Rents and housing costs keep going up while wages don't. So how can the city and you at the city create better and more access to affordable housing in West St. Paul?
Yeah, every decision we make around housing at that council table helps to improve the chances that someone is going to be able to find housing they can afford. So we've chosen, there's been a great mix of projects. So we're working on workforce housing, Dakota County, which is just going to be an incredible project right on the border of West St. Paul and St. Paul, right on the bus line, within walkability to a number of places. And then also, the project at Kmart is at 30% AMI. I do know also some people have been a little bit critical of that, thinking that that number is not good enough. But those numbers don't come from the city. Those numbers come from the county and the state. And I've actually brought up that issue to the League of Minnesota Cities and the Policies Committees there. And I can see the people who help us plan and help us, the cities make policy scribbling, writing down, and taking that comment seriously. And so we can continue to be an advocate for affordable housing across the state from here in West St. Paul. Additionally, something I haven't heard anyone talk about is we, I've supported the Matrix Housing for the past two years. Matrix Housing has provided, I can't forget what this thumbs up means, stop or does it mean?
It's like a 30-second sort of timer thing.
So Matrix has been providing housing for people who are homeless here in West St. Paul in two of our churches. And a number of members of WOW and myself have gone and served food and talked to the program leaders there, and I would continue to support programs like that.
Great. The clapping, when you see the clapping, that's when your time is up. But again, there it is. So Victoria is doing a great job keeping time there. This is a very bizarre format for a debate or a forum.
Especially this is you and me.
Yeah. So, but it's nice to talk to you today. So yeah, that's actually really interesting. And did you say 30% AMI was? Well, that's actually very affordable relative to a lot of housing that's constructed in the Twin Cities. Okay, the next question is about small businesses. And my favorite things about West St. Paul are all the wonderful small businesses that you can find in the city. So the city supports small businesses in a lot of ways. What more could the city be doing and what would you be doing? What additional strategies would you propose to help support the city's small businesses?
Yeah, I have noticed that St. Paul often takes credit for some of our best businesses. When there's a news story or an article about Beirut or Embergesas El Gordo or El Cubano or all these amazing restaurants, I see St. Paul getting quite a bit of credit in those areas. So anyway, I promote small business like that. I shop and I eat and I drink at our local businesses and I promote them online as much as possible. Personally, I also have a great working relationship with our Economic Development Authority. I had, him and I had lunch last week, and I was like, Jim, what can I do to be of help? Can I go with you to meetings? Can I show up with potential business interests and sell West St. Paul better with you? So we have a great place here and we have everything you need right here in West St. Paul. And you know, a lot of us commute to, I'm getting away from the question. But keep working with our Economic Development Authority on things like that, but also approving grants and loans to diverse small businesses and supporting the ones that are here as much as possible.
Great. You're making me hungry, and I'm going to have to head over to Beirut and Cubano. I'll do that soon, I promise. Okay, the next topic is about sort of the state of politics and discussion today. And I don't probably have to explain to anyone here that it's a very divisive time in America and in St. Paul and West St. Paul as well. So the question is about politics. Politics can be divisive in a smaller city like ours. It's not possible to simply ignore people you may not agree with. So can you give some examples of how you have engaged with constituents that you fundamentally disagreed with?
Yeah, it happens often, and I think some people are surprised in a good way with the outcome after we do talk. I think people go in with a lot of preconceived notions about people based on whatever partisan number stands next to their name. I mean, we can all find that information about each other despite the fact that we are running as nonpartisan candidates. But I've been lit dropping, and I don't leave out houses that I know belong to conservative families or families that may disagree with some of my views. I'm still engaged, I still talk. I had an interaction recently that I thought I severely disappointed the person because our views were so far apart. And I got an email from them thanking them for the debate, that it was the spirit of America, that they're so much more comfortable now, and they're, you know, happy to know that they can come to me if the tree in the boulevard falls in the yard or they have an INI issue or they need me. So I'm approachable. I'm someone also, like, I like to have a good debate, but we can still be friends. Like, I love it, so.
Can I just, I have a pet peeve rule that I do where if you use an acronym, you have to explain it. So the INI, INI means what again?
Influenza and infiltration. If you have an issue with your sewer lateral.
Okay, great. I actually didn't know that one, so that's great.
I might talk more about INI, just to wait.
Okay. Great. Well, the next question is about sort of a wonky topic, which is the budget and local government aid. So if, for those who are not aware, the state of Minnesota pays money to cities like West St. Paul in the form of local government aid. And the question is about sort of how the state budget shortfall is going to affect West St. Paul. So it's highly likely that there will be a decrease in the state government aid. How would you deal with a revenue shortfall? Would you increase taxes or would you cut programs? Or what would you do about that?
First, I want to say that West St. Paul already does not receive our fair share of LGA. So we pay in a stronger percentage than other similar suburbs than we do, and they receive more local government aid. So I would be happy to advocate for us additionally, more than I have in the past two years, to receive our fair share of funding. But saying that, that probably means we'll get even less on top of that list, right? And so I think we have a really incredible finance director and a city manager and a really good team here that can make adjustments. So you have your projected cost, you have your projected capital improvement plan, you know what fire truck you're going to need to replace, you know what snowplow you might need to get serviced. We know all these things, and so we can plan. And so we plan really conservatively financially right now as it is due to our previous budgetary issues. And so I have strong confidence that we can adjust.
Great. I don't look forward to that happening, but that's a possibility. Another thing that's certainly on my mind, and I think a lot of people's minds right now, is climate change. The fires in California are the small example, and the smoke was visible here in Minnesota, and so that's kind of frightening. But that's just one of many, many, many examples. So polls show public concern about climate change is increasing. What actions do you think the city should take to address this?
Sure, I am the liaison to the Environmental Committee, and that started a few months after I was appointed to council, where I was told that I'm potentially the first council liaison that believes climate change is a real issue. And so we are getting further than we've ever gotten before in these matters related to climate change and climate action in our city. So let's see, we have been working hard on our Green Step Cities. Green Step Cities program is something that cities all around Minnesota can take certain actions, and they submit them to this organization that then helps them, you essentially move along in the steps. West St. Paul is at step two, and anything we do next is going to have to be a little heftier. You know, we've done really great things, like we're Bird City USA. We have an EAB, which is Emerald Ash Bore Action Plan, that we received a grant for. So when ash trees die in the city, we can replace them with new trees that will be healthy. Let's see. And so we're working on those steps and moving up that ladder. But in addition to that, we are having the Environmental Committee take a look at code. And so that will allow us to put more teeth into our code when new business wants to come here, when developments come through. So then you can have more green building code. You know, you could potentially enforce certain materials that are green roofs or white roofs, different things that help those efforts. And so, yeah, right now, the market really drives itself, but we'll be able to put some teeth into our code soon that can allow us to do a lot more. Trying to think if there's anything else.
Let me ask you a follow-up because we got a question from one of the viewers today, Mr. Orange, which is what will you do to improve city sustainability and resilience? So that's, those are both terms you hear a lot in regards to climate change and environmentalism. But is that a little bit of a different frame about resilience?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we can think of when, you know, we're having a lot more extreme weather events due to climate change, and that impacts city infrastructure. And so that's really important that we are aware of how that's affecting our city infrastructure. Part of that is what I mentioned around INI, inflation and filtration. So that has to do with how much water we send to get treated. And so the better we can make sure that people's pipes are hooked up correctly and storm water isn't going in to be treated by St. Paul Regional, then that will help immensely. Also, we're doing a pond inventory, which I know ponds and other water systems greatly help reduce the impact on infrastructure as well with extreme water events.
Great. This is sort of a follow-up, but the next question is about one of my favorite topics, which is parking requirements. So this is the Smith Dodd area, the 40 acres. The city recently eased parking requirements for businesses in the Smith Dodd area. What additional zoning or other changes do you think could help spur business development in that area? Also, by the Oxendales.
Yeah, I was so glad that when we did that, when we did the parking overlay there, now everyone needs to learn that you can park on the street. I still hear lots of talk about potentially putting in a parking lot at 1010 Dodd, and I think that's unnecessary. We all just have to practice a little bit and, oh no, my parents don't know the rules. Turn off your video. Hi, Aunt. I'm so sorry, that's my family. What was I saying? Parking requirement.
Yeah, we're talking about 1010 Dodd and parking, and your parents don't know how to park, I think is what you said.
Okay, so folks are going to have to learn how to park on the street, which will help the neighborhood quite a bit. You know, we talk a lot about how we can activate that space up there at 1010 Dodd. I've before floated like a water filling station since so many people are riding their bikes there. You know, the Camelot Cleaners is now for sale, which again can drastically change the makeup of that neighborhood. And we also talk about traffic mitigation efforts, which is one of the big ones that we kind of have to wait on. So they'll potentially put around about there, but it could happen anywhere between five and 25 years. So yeah, we'll see what MinDod does, but.
Great. I'm excited to see what happens as well. Okay, so well, we're actually coming to the end of the questions. This is your last question before we move to the closing remarks. But this is sort of a fun one. So what are your favorite places to spend time in West St. Paul? And what do you feel our city offers that our surrounding communities do not? So this is your chance to take digs at your neighbors.
My favorite places in West St. Paul are, I mean, Amore Coffee is kind of Ward Three's cheers, right? We all, you can go in there and get a high five from your state rep and talk to your city council member about parking minimums or, you know, it's just a great place to sit and be seated and have a great coffee. What else is my favorite? I mentioned a few in the beginning. What else do I love? I love Oxendales. My mom is thinking about moving to West St. Paul because of Oxendales. It's just amazing. I actually have a number of friends that I've recruited to live in West St. Paul more recently. Pretty soon, there'll be a roller derby team in West St. Paul, I would guess. But West St. Paul also has the most tight-knit community. So whenever anyone is struggling here, if you reach out online or if someone catches wind that you're having difficulty, this is a community that will step up and fundraise and cook you a lasagna and watch your kids if you need to. So it's something really to be proud of.
Great. We did get a question from the chat. So anyone, we do have some extra time here. If you are watching this right now and you have a question for our candidate, Ms. Engsarn, please do type it in and we will have our moderator pass that along to me. But the new question we just received was some residents have expressed concern about increased crime in West St. Paul. So how do you address crime issues?
Sure. I do know that this is not a problem unique to West St. Paul right now. Crime rates are increasing across not just the Twin Cities, but the US. People, a lot of people are out of work. People, some people are struggling to pay bills, some people are struggling to pay rent, and I directly correlate those things to crime and possibly people feeling desperate. So I hope that as the economy bounces back and we make appropriate decisions to help people as well. So that means promoting programs at the county and the state and the federal government when they offer funding assistance, that we promote those to our citizens as well as our businesses to make sure that everyone can thrive and stay afloat and do the best they can.
Great. Well, that is all the questions that we have for you. So if you want to take a couple of minutes here to offer closing remarks of any kind, this is your opportunity, Ms. Engsarn.
I'm just kind of scrolling the names here, and I appreciate every person that's attending tonight. I know every person here deeply, deeply cares about West St. Paul and deeply cares about this election too, right? Be it my race or any other race in the city. It's an important moment that we don't go back. So in closing, I said this at the candidate forum, and I'll say it again, no matter how good the idea or how strong your conviction, no person at City Hall can accomplish their ideas alone. So much of this job is consensus building, collaboration, and relationship building. So for the sake of establishing a healthy, safe, and welcoming community, I ask for your vote this election. You can learn more about me or reach out to talk through my website, atlisaforweststpaul.com. And I think that's about it. And Bill, I do have to say, when I was appointed in 2019, you tweeted about it. Don't worry, it wasn't. Don't worry, it wasn't bad. You tweeted the Pioneer Press article that said, "West St. Paul politics is a lot like roller derby." So Lisa is prepared.
I think that still holds up. I don't know what you think. Roller derby is a good, I wrote a column about roller derby many years ago, and I was just amazed at how much preparation and practice the teams did to get ready for the bouts. So I've always been very impressed by roller derby.
The only difference is if I flattened someone around here, I might get in trouble. We'll use our words.
Great, thank you. Well, we have reached the end of the forum. I want to thank all the candidates, the one candidate, for joining us here today and sharing your vision and opinions with the citizens of the West St. Paul. And just a reminder, we did invite Mr. Meisinger as well. I also want to give a sincere thank you to all of our volunteers from Women of West St. Paul, residents of Color Collaborative, and the West St. Paul Greenway Project who put in the time to create and host this event. So thank you to them. I also want to challenge everyone here to act. Never is an election more in your hands than a local election. Turnout is usually very low for local elections. So vote early or vote on election day. Write a letter to the editor, talk to local officials, reach out to the candidates, ask questions, volunteer, talk with your neighbors. The election is on November 3rd, but early voting is open now. So you can go vote by mail or in person at the Dakota County Service Center. For more information, go to sos.state.mn.us/elections-voting. So I think that link will be on the screen in front of you now. I invite you to contact any of the candidates for more information. Stay healthy. Thank you all so much for tuning in, and thanks for attending today.